Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting and our final budget adoption on Tuesday, June 25th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Chaplain B. Evans from KNLB Radio, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Amanda from Veterans United.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Shall we bring the Lord here this evening? Let's pray. Father God, we are just so pleased to be able to walk in your throne room, and I know I say that all the time, Lord, but I'm overwhelmed at your generosity that you want to hear from your children. And Father, tonight, we do want you to hear from us because we want to lift up the needs of our city, and this council has the heart of the people in their hands. And I just thank you for them, Lord, that they're so diligent, looking at all the different aspects of everything they're going to vote on tonight, and they absolutely know that their yes is yes and their no is no. But Father, you tell us that we have not because we ask not. So tonight, I would just love to lift up our Sheriff Schuster and his family before you, and I just ask that you're there to bring peace to them, and we just thank you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, Amanda. If you'd please like to share some information about Veterans United and the works that you're doing.
Absolutely. So my name is Amanda. I am the new Outreach Coordinator for Veterans United Arizona, a local nonprofit here in town for disabled veterans and homeless. We have a few projects going on right now. The first we'd like to share is about the cooling stations we have going up around town. Thanks to Home Depot, we've been able to provide one already at the Clothing Closet. We've got three more going up this week. Thank you, Home Depot, for the grants and sponsorship. Something else we've got going on is the Powwow, as well as the Christmas Extravaganza, November and December. We are getting ready for that. It's going to be really big events. So that's what we've got going on.
Fantastic. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yes. We'll move on to Item 4, which is the roll. Call Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cameron Moses.
Here.
Mayor Kalshihi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 5 is our Consent Agenda. Would any of the councilmembers like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Koch?
Motion.
Please.
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing number, ready to vote.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 6 is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 6.1 is to announce the vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those current and upcoming vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member, one regular non-pilot member, and one alternate pilot member. Board of Adjustment, three regular members and three alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, three regular members. And Planning and Zoning Commission, three regular members and two alternate members. The deadline to submit applications to the City Clerk's Office for consideration of these current and upcoming vacancies was Friday, May 31st, 2024. However, applications will continue to be accepted for any future vacancies and kept on file for up to one year. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Item 6.2 is our City Manager Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. For those that parked in the parking lot, we saw two fire engines out there. One of them is a refurb, and one of them is a brand-new fire engine. So the challenge this evening was just for those viewing the two engines, which one is a refurb, which one is new. So one cost about $600,000 and one cost about $1.2? Is that right? Oh, that's all right. Wow, jeez. So $380,000, thank you, Chief Poloffus, and $1.2 million for the brand-new one. So obviously, it's quite a reduction in cost, but we wanted to do both and give it a try on the refurbs. So they do look really good. Yeah, nice job. Congratulations to you, Councilmember Dave Lane, for earning the Citizen of the Year Award from the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce just last week. Dave will serve as the Grand Marshal of the London Bridge Days Parade in October. It's a very well-deserved honor, Dave, and congratulations to you.
Should we get to pick his outfit for that marshal job?
Okay. Vice Mayor Cameron Moses, you celebrated Go Skateboard Day at Tenell Memorial Skatepark just last Friday with a proclamation from the mayor's office. Go Skateboarding Day was created in 2004 to make skateboarding more accessible and grow local skateboarding communities, promoting physical and mental health for the youth by getting them off their screens and getting them outdoors. A reminder, the public is invited to a second Lake Havasu, second bridge feasibility study, excuse me, a second open house for the second bridge feasibility study. It'll take place on this Thursday, which is June 27th. It'll be in this room in the council chambers at our municipal courthouse, and it'll start at 5:30 PM and go till 7:00 PM. At that meeting, you can learn about the roadway and the bridge alternatives being considered and discover the preferred alignment recommendation, and we encourage you to attend because your feedback is critical or is crucial. The public is invited to join us in the completion of Adant's State Route 95 pavement project. We'll be at ribbon cutting on Friday, June 28th, this week at 8:00 AM. We're going to meet down by Sarah Park at the parking lot of baseball field number seven. The city obviously greatly appreciates the efforts of the legislative leadership and the work Adant put into the roadway to enhance one of our most critical roadways. It would not have been impossible without the leadership of Senator Sonny Borelli, Representative Leah Biasucci, and former Representative Regina Cobb, and their persistence in securing the funding at the state level. So thank you for that, and we're realizing the benefits of that today. And I'd like to announce an additional free residential household hazardous waste event. It'll be offered and hosted by Republic Services. It'll take place this Saturday, which is June 29th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and that'll be at Fire Station 2, which is at 2065 Kaowa Boulevard North. And then the event is held just for Lake Havasu residents and offers a safe disposal solution for various household hazardous waste. For more information on the event, please contact Republic Services, and their phone number is 855-9441. And a reminder, Lake Havasu City is holding a primary election on Tuesday, July 30th, for the purpose of electing three councilmembers. Voter registration for the primary election closes on July 1st at midnight. Residents may register, re-register, or change voter information by completing a voter registration application on the Mojave County Recorder's website at mojave.gov or online at servicearizona.com. Early voting for the primary election is held at the Mojave County Library located at 1770 McCulloch Boulevard North. It'll be from Wednesday, July 3rd through Friday, July 26th, Monday through Friday, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Registered voters may request an early ballot by mail, and then be mailed to them by Friday, July 19th at the latest. And of course, for more information, please contact our City Clerk's Office at 453-4142. And finally, I'd just like to wish everybody a very safe and enjoyable Independence Day. With that, Mayor, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. We'll move on to our public hearings, Item 7. During each of our public hearings, there will be a public discussion, so we'll open up the public hearing during that time. You just make your way to the microphone. There will be a light or an indicator on the television screens with a countdown on the time that you have. When your time is starting to limit, it'll turn red, so just keep an eye on the screens when that happens. We do encourage you, if you have any discussion on any of the public hearings, to do it at that time. If you wait till the call to the public, which will be at the end of the meeting, we can't have a two-way conversation. We can just listen intently. I'll go over all that again when we get to that section of our meeting, but we do encourage you to participate. We'll start with Item 7.1, which is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License, a Wine Bar and Local Eatery at 2097 McCulloch Boulevard North, number 100. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Summer Tilger has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Summeray Wine Bar and Local Eatery located at 2097 McCulloch Boulevard North, 100. All application and posting fees have been paid, and no objections were received. This application was reviewed internally with no comments. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance through remote conferencing to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council, for Ms. Williams or the applicant? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yes, Councilmember Campbell?
I move to recommend the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series Number 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Summeray's Wine Bar and Local Eatery LLC at 2097 McCulloch Boulevard North, number 100.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing number, ready to vote.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. I made a note. I won't forget again. All right, Item 7.2 is Adopt Resolution Number 24-3759, Appointing Members to the Lake Havasu City Airport Advisory Board. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received 10 applications requesting consideration for appointment to the Airport Advisory Board. These appointments are necessary to fill the upcoming vacancies of one regular pilot member, one regular non-pilot member, and one alternate pilot member. The Application Review Panel conducted interviews for the Airport Advisory Board on June 13th and 18th, and recommends that Lewis Worthy be reappointed as a regular non-pilot member, James Baldwin be appointed as a regular pilot member, and Thomas Williams be appointed as an alternate pilot member with terms ending June 30th, 2027. All applications were provided to you within the packet, and all applicants were invited to attend tonight's meeting to answer any questions from the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. We're going to have a series of these over the next couple of items of appointing members to our Boards, Committees, and Commissions. We had 39 applicants for the four Boards, Committees, and Commissions with really amazing credentials and folks that wanted to be involved, and we had very limited spots. So if you are not selected or appointed this evening, we do encourage you to continue to stay active and stay involved and apply at future times as well. It's just a testament to the amazing people that we have in Lake Havasu that many folks want to be a part of the solutions and part of our community. So thank you so much for all of the people that took the time to apply, took the time to meet with the interview panel, and then, of course, attended here this evening, and then for your service on the specific Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Are there any additional comments from members of council? Entertain a motion?
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Koch?
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3759, appointing Lewis Worthy as a regular pilot member, a regular non-pilot member, or let's see, as a regular non-pilot member, and, oh, hold on. Trying to read two different screens here. James Baldwin as a regular non-pilot member and Thomas Williams as an alternate pilot member to the Lake Havasu City Airport Advisory Board with terms ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Councilmember Lane. So that, just so I can clarify, so that's Lewis Worthy to be reappointed as a regular non-pilot member, James Baldwin to be appointed as a regular pilot member, and Thomas Williams to be appointed as an alternate pilot member with a term ending June 30th, 2027? Is that correct?
Yes.
Councilmember Koch? That's your second, Councilmember Lane? All right, is there any additional discussion? Seeing number, ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Thanks. Aye.
Thank you. I moved the note I wrote it on.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. So we did this a little bit strangely, but if Mr. Worthy, I don't see Mr. Worthy in the audience. Mr. Baldwin? I don't believe I see Mr. Baldwin either, but Mr. Williams? Yeah, if you just come say hello to the council, just so they can put a face with a name, please.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but council, this is Mr. Williams.
Yes. Nice to meet you all.
Yeah, congratulations, and thank you for serving.
Of course, thank you for the opportunity. It's, you know, my pleasure to be able to serve my great city.
Excellent. Glad to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Item 7.2, which is Adopt Resolution Number 24-3759, Appointing Members to the Lake Havasu City Board of Adjustments. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received five applications requesting consideration for appointment as regular or alternate members to the Board of Adjustment. Appointments are necessary to fill vacancies due to current and upcoming vacancies of three regular members and three alternate member positions. The Application Review Panel conducted interviews for the Board of Adjustment on June 10th and 19th, and recommends that Kevin Casey and Jim Harris be reappointed as regular members with terms ending June 30th, 2027, and Todd Rounds be reappointed as an alternate member, and Larry Heller be appointed as an alternate member with terms ending June 30th, 2026. The applications are also included in your packet, and the applicants were invited to attend tonight's meeting to answer any questions from the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions from members of the council, for Ms. Williams or any members? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3760, appointing Kevin Casey and Jim Harris as regular members to Lake Havasu Board of Adjustment with terms ending June 30th, 2027, and Todd Rounds be reappointed as an alternate member, and Larry Heller be appointed as an alternate member with terms ending June 30th, 2026. The applications are also included in your packet, and the applicants were invited to attend tonight's meeting to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions from members of the council, for Ms. Williams or any members? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3760, appointing Kevin Casey and Jim Harris as regular members to Lake Havasu Board of Adjustment with terms ending June 30th, 2027, and Todd Rounds and Larry Heller be appointed as alternate members with terms ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, and we have a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing number, ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Is Mr. Casey with us this evening? Let's see him. And then Mr. Harris, if you'd like to wave and say hello. Thank you for your service. Congratulations. Mr. Rounds? Yeah, thank you, and thank you for your continued service. And then Mr. Heller. It's Mr. Perfect. Yeah, thank you for your service and congratulations. Thank you. All right, moving on to Item 7.4, which is Adopt Resolution Number 24-3761, Appointing Members to the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received nine applications requesting consideration for appointment as regular members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. These appointments are necessary to fill the upcoming vacancies of three regular member positions. The Application Review Panel conducted interviews for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on June 13th and 17th, and recommends that Ashley Pasquale and Kyler Cox be reappointed as regular members and Karen Cooper be reappointed, or I'm sorry, Karen Cooper be appointed as a regular member with terms ending June 30th, 2027. All applications were provided to you in your packet, and the applicants were also invited to attend tonight's meeting to answer any questions from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions from members of the council for the applicants or for Ms. Williams? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3761, appointing Ashley Pasquale, Kyler Cox, and Karen Cooper as regular members to the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with the terms ending June 30th, 2027. Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Then Ms. Pasquale, I don't see her, and she told me she was not going to be in town today. Mr. Cox is on, attending virtually, and Ms. Cooper? Is Ms. Cooper here? Well, congratulations, and thank you for your service to Lake Havasu City. Moving on to Item 7.5 is Adopt Resolution Number 24-3762, Appointing Members to the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received 15 applications requesting consideration for appointment as a regular member or as a member to the Planning and Zoning Commission. These appointments are necessary to fill the upcoming vacancies of three regular members and two alternate member positions. The Application Review Panel conducted interviews for the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 10th and 19th, and recommends that David Diaz, Gabrielle Medley, and Jim Harris be reappointed as regular members with terms ending June 30th, 2027, and Lonnie Stevenson be reappointed as an alternate member, and Mary Costa be appointed as an alternate member with terms ending June 30th, 2026. All applications were provided to you in your packet today, and the applicants were also invited to attend tonight's meeting to answer any questions from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions from members of the council for any of the applicants or for Ms. Williams? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item?
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any questions or motion. Mayor, motion?
Councilmember Campbell?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3762, appointing David Diaz, Gabriel Medley, and Jim Harris to regular members with terms ending June 30th, 2027, and Lonnie Stevens and Mary Costa, let's see, Mary, as an alternate members of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission with terms ending June 30th, 2026.
Second. Nope, she's got it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, and we have a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is Adopt Resolution Number 24-3763, Amending Resolution Number 23-3687, Transferring Budget Appropriations From One General Fund Department or Division to Another for Fiscal Year 2324. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This resolution is to amend the current fiscal year budget, the FY24 budget. We have one transfer that is proposed in this amendment. The, there was, there were legal expenses related to the PSPRS Board that were not covered by the small budget that's contained in the City Clerk's Department, and the city attorney graciously allowed us to transfer funds from the city attorney's budget because she had enough funds to actually cover those additional legal expenses. So that is the only amendment that we're proposing in this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Olson, and great work for you and your team and all the Cavessus to have one amendment for the entire budget year. So fantastic of $10,000, so we appreciate that. Are there questions, comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3763, approving the budget amendments listed on the amended schedules E and F for fiscal year 2324. Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing number, ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Item 7.7 is our Truth and Taxation Public Hearing on the Proposed Fiscal Year 2425 Property Tax Levy. Ms. Olson?
Thank you again. Tonight, this item is to open up the public hearing, the Truth and Taxation Hearing associated with the fiscal year budget and the property tax levy. Since we did not raise our property tax rate, but we had an increase in assessed valuation that resulted in additional revenue for the city in the property tax category, therefore the Truth and Taxation Hearing is required by state law, and that's what this item is here tonight. I don't know.
Steve, can you pull up the PowerPoint?
There was, I'm not sure where my, oh, there, whoo, okay. Here we go. So just to add to that, the tax rate again is not changing for FY25. The property taxes that we collect are used for basic services, like our police, fire, parks, recreation. It's interesting and important to note that only 6.7 cents of every dollar paid by a Lake Havasu City property owner actually is received by the city. So again, this, the table shows the levy rate remaining at .6718 per $100 of assessed value. The assessed value increased from FY24 to FY25, resulting in an additional levy amount to be collected. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council, for Ms. Olson?
Yeah, this evening, we're finalizing some of our budget components. So we did our tentative budget adoption in our last meeting. Tonight, we're talking about our Truth and Taxation Hearing, as well as our final budget adoption in a future item. So it might feel like we're going through some of this stuff quickly, but we've actually spent a lot of time on these in various public hearings throughout the last several months at the council.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item?
I'm a little bit confused with the tax rate, $3 in some way for $100 or $100,000? On the screen, it said $100,000.
Yeah, the valuations are based off $100,000 valuation is what that is the correct amount, and the tax rate is .067. So does that answer your question, Mr. Wisdom? Perfect. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve the levy of the proposed fiscal year 2425 property tax and to assess the levy at the July 9th, 2024 City Council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Item 7.7 is our Truth and Taxation Public Hearing on the Proposed Fiscal Year 2425 Property Tax Levy. Ms. Olson?
Thank you again. Tonight, this item is to open up the public hearing, the Truth and Taxation Hearing associated with the fiscal year budget and the property tax levy. Since we did not raise our property tax rate, but we had an increase in assessed valuation that resulted in additional revenue for the city in the property tax category, therefore the Truth and Taxation Hearing is required by state law, and that's what this item is here tonight. I don't know.
Steve, can you pull up the PowerPoint?
There was, I'm not sure where my, oh, there, woo, okay. Here we go. So just to add to that, the tax rate again is not changing for FY25. The property taxes that we collect are used for basic services, like our police, fire, parks, recreation. It's interesting and important to note that only 6.7 cents of every dollar paid by a
I move to approve the levy of the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five property tax and to assess the levy at the July ninth, twenty twenty-four City Council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven point eight is we are going to, I need a motion to adjourn to a special meeting to do our budget adoption?
So moved.
All right, we are now in a special meeting. Welcome to our special meeting, and we'll move on to item seven point nine, which is adopt resolution number twenty-four, dash, three, seven, five, eight, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five final budget. Ms. Olson?
Thank you. I was going to start, this will start with just a review of the budget process. As the mayor mentioned, we've been meeting on the budget for several months, and for about ten months, staff has been working on the budget. The capital improvement plan started in about September or October. The operating budgets are submitted in December. Council has their planning session, usually the end of January or first of February of each year, and that is where staff gets direction from the council as to what they like to see in the budget. Then staff proceeds with finalizing the budget for the city manager's review. Every single department's budget is reviewed with the city manager and the staff who prepared the budget, and then we start the council meetings, which I'm sure is fresh in your minds for. We had two meetings, April eleventh and May ninth, to review the CIP and the operating budget. On June eleventh, you adopted the capital improvement plan and the tentative budget, and then tonight, we are here to adopt the final budget and have the property tax hearing, which we just had. And then on July ninth, we will adopt the property tax levy. By law, the tentative budget was published in the newspaper as required. Counsel, as a reminder, may change or reduce the amount of the final budget, but they cannot increase the amount. That cap was set, that maximum was set with the adoption of the tentative budget, and that occurred on June eleventh. Again, as a reminder, the total budget is just over two hundred and fifty-seven million dollars, and that includes all funds of all kinds. Again, on the property taxes, you will meet on July ninth for looking at the tax levy rates for the city property tax and the special district. The proposed rates are in the FY twenty-five proposed final budget. Again, the levy amount for city property tax is six point seven million dollars, and for the improvement district number two, it's a little over seventeen thousand dollars per year. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there questions or comments from members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Lynn? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you. This should be our last discussion, other than the tax levy next meeting, but I just wanted to once again reiterate, thank you to the staff. This is my eighth budget that we've done, and we have never raised taxes, and I appreciate that, and that's not because of the work of the council, it's because of the work of the staff, and we appreciate all the hard work that you guys do. One of the things that we hear quite often is live within your means, and that's what we're doing, and this building is tantamount to that. We paid cash for this building because of money that we save, and I just want to say thank you and appreciate all the hard work that you guys put into this, because it's not a one or two meeting thing, it's a ten-month process, so.
Thank you. It's definitely a team effort by all of the employees involved.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion? Mayor, motion? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt resolution number two, four, dash, three, seven, five, eight, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, we now will, item seven point ten is to reconvene to a regular meeting.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to do that, so we're back in the meeting we started with, and we'll go on to item seven point eleven. Approved statement of work for Oracle Cloud Comprehensive Managed Services support with Camtra Technologies LLC for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Ms. Olson?
Thank you again. This item is to spend some of the money you just included in the budget you just adopted, so. This is a statement of work for our Oracle Cloud system. This will be a service and support contract. We do this annually. Oracle does not provide direct service and support to their customers. You have to go through a, and Camtra is who we have chosen for that support and service. This is for managing and servicing our main modules, which are the human resources module, referred to as a human capital management module, and the enterprise resource planning module, which is the financial system. So it's kind of the hub of the entire financial system. So these services provide us with the technical support that we need for day-to-day ongoing operations, as well as any continued implementation items and any reconfiguring that we might need. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Olson on this item? So Oracle is our main management system. That's what we use for pretty much everything that happens here, so this is the service and support contract for that. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Coke?
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve and authorize the city manager execute the statement of work with Camtra Technologies LLC in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars for fiscal year twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke and a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
This is Olson.
All right, Kelly, item seven point twelve is approve the cooperative purchase of a police interceptor explorer K nine vehicle from Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford, Chief Sterling.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council. I'm excited tonight to ask for your approval to purchase a police interceptor K nine vehicle from Santan Ford utilizing a cooperative purchase. So the background of this is, Police Department was awarded a grant through the Arizona Department of Emergency Military Affairs last year, and this is the last piece of that puzzle that we've put together, and that is essentially funding the full purchase of a fully outfitted K nine vehicle, which will be dedicated to our narcotics unit. This will be the first time that we've ever done that, and we're excited about that. So ultimately, the ability for our K nine trained in narcotics detection is for us to keep drugs off the street, right? The war on, war on drugs, which is a constant battle. Due to the extreme temperatures in Lake Havasu City, it takes us, there's a lot of special parts and pieces that outfit this vehicle, alarms and so forth, to ensure that the animal is safe inside, so that's why the price of this, which is fully funded by this grant, is just over seventy-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, and that money was essentially put into the twenty-three, twenty-four grants fund and has been carried forward into this next budget process. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chief Sterling. Are there any questions from members of the council for the chief? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Yeah, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah.
Please.
I move to approve the cooperative purchase of a police interceptor explorer K nine vehicle from Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford, in the amount of seventy-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Subject to the manufacturer's official published pricing and discount off of the manufacturer's retail price is amended by the Arizona State Purchasing Office Cooperative and authorize the city manager to approve this amended adjustment.
Second.
We have a motion, a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. The next item on our agenda is item seven point one, three, award professional services agreement for the programming, design, construction, manager-at-risk management and construction management of fire station number seven to Pearlman Architects of Arizona. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just working, yeah, I'm here tonight to bring forth a professional services contract for that design and CMAR administration of the fire station number seven. As just a little background, Fire Station Seven project was identified in fire study that was done for the city previously, and we zeroed in on the location was based on a development in the area, increased development and to improve response times to about twelve thousand residents. The Fire Station Seven project, we had some citing criteria on where we would cite that. Of course, it needed to be zeroed in on a zone that fit the response time and the residence. Some of the criteria we used was, one, a functional fire station, two, increased or decreased response times, and population that this area would serve. It was a real benefit to have a city-owned parcel for the location, and then for added fire and EMS protection in that area. I had a picture there of the overall site. You can see that it outlets directly onto McCulloch Boulevard, and then another view there of just a ground shot of the actual parcel we're looking to develop. We had to go, we went through an RFSQ selection process, that's request for statements of qualifications from, from different design firms. Five design firms had submitted, three firms were selected for interview, and Pearlman, who is, Ken Powers is here tonight, but Pearlman as one of the most qualified top Arizona firms that had submitted was selected as the highest qualified for the project. The professional services scope was negotiated for the design, CMAR, that's contractor basically to come on board during the process, and the construction management. We negotiated approximately nine percent of the estimated construction cost. We thought that was a great effort by the team to get to that level of percentage of the estimated construction cost. So the, with that, the project schedule, we anticipate the design and construction document phase is going to take approximately a year. That's being conservative and most likely could be somewhat less. Real simple, construction phase of the project is one year or less. And tonight, we have the negotiated exhibits A and B in your packet for scope and fee, and that professional services fee was five hundred and fourteen thousand, one forty-nine, eighty-eight, and I might add, there is a handful of optional services that were included in the total contract price, however, may not be needed as we progress through the project. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Are there questions from members of the council for Mr. Wolf? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Go ahead and close the public hearing. Everyone's very quiet tonight, my colleagues in council and our public hearing. It's too hot, is that what I'm hearing? Yes. Yeah, we were on, Councilmember Coke and myself were on speak-out earlier today in preparation of this meeting, and she had pointed out in the council communication, and Mr. Wolf had mentioned it as well, as far as the, the demand and what the response times will reduce, you know, right now, it's decreased from about six to fourteen minutes, decreasing down to two to six minutes for these approximately twelve thousand citizens, so this is a project we've been talking about for many, many years, and really excited to be able to move this one, this one forward. I do have a more of a curiosity question, Mr. Wolf, and I understand if you don't know, but under the scope of the project, it says that it's apparatus bays, but they're going to be back-in-bays, no drive-through bays with high-speed roll doors. Why is that so specific? Like, how do you even know that yet?
There was some preliminary design done by, implemented by the chief for how a facility was best suited for this more of a, I'm going to use the word satellite location, not one of the mains. I'd be happy to have a fire chief come in and give you some more information on that.
Perfect.
Thank you, Pete.
We couldn't let this project go without Chief Wolf is saying something, so that was kind of my, my way to bring you up, so.
Now, I appreciate it, Mayor, Council. When we were doing the design for the specific location, it's, it's looped in McCulloch, and it's a slope, and what we're looking for is apparatus storage, and that's why we're not having a drive-through. With the high-speed doors, it's just quicker reaction time, and these specific doors are going to be based on cycles. So we're looking at about fifteen hundred calls coming out of the station a year. So just for longevity, we were very specific, and when we attended the design conference down in Phoenix, we learned a lot of this, and especially with negotiating with Pearl, just the, the design and function of the station is having quicker response time in that area. That's why we specifically didn't go through a drive-through, because we need more storage space for our apparatus. If you notice, most of our stations are two-bay stations. We never thought for expansion, so this is where we have an upper and lower level that has basically three up top and three on the bottom for the storage to get our million-dollar apparatuses out of the element and for the longevity. I hope that answered your question, and if you have any more, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Are there any other questions from members of the council for the chief?
What?
I said, you're not excited.
I, I'm, I'm very excited about this.
Jump out of your chair over there.
I first had to be asked up, but.
While he's up there, can I ask him how many ambulances that pickups you've done already?
So, oh, for ambulance transport program for over thirteen days operating, we are just at about a hundred and thirty-five transports. Even though that's, sorry, Kelly, that's not in the topic, but.
Yeah, and moving on, yeah, so any other questions for the chief? Yeah, perfect, all right, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Yes, all right, we're at the point where we entertain a motion or any questions?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Coke?
Motion?
Please.
I move to award the professional services agreement for the programming, design, CMAR services, and construction management for fire station number seven to Pearlman Architects of Arizona in the amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. All right, item seven point fourteen is award agreement to Evaqua Water Technologies LLC for odor mitigating management control program for the wastewater utility. Mr. Fernando?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'll give you a little bit of background of why we need these chemicals. The wastewater addition is responsible for collecting and treating all the sewage generated in the city, which is connected to the sewer system. Gravity sewer lines collect the sewage from homes and drain to the lowest practical areas. More than seventy lift stations are positioned in these low areas to pump sewage to three separate treatment plants. Forty-nine miles of sewer mains connect these lift stations. Due to microbiological activity in the sewage, these lift stations produce odors, mostly from hydrogen sulfide, we call sewer gas. Chemicals are used to control or minimize these odors. Specifically, we have identified two chemicals which are effective depending on the length of the post main. Calcium nitrates, or we call bioxide, is used for short mains, and calcium hydroxide, we call alkogen, is used for longer sewer mains. Proposals for call for our odor control program, which consists of supplying chemicals, storage tanks, delivery systems, and ongoing maintenance. storage tanks, delivery systems, and ongoing maintenance. Three responses were received. Evacqua Water Technologies quoted the chemicals price package as requested, and we also received two alternative submissions from Penko Incorporated. An evaluation committee rated each proposal and determined that the best option was to award the contract to Evacqua Water Technologies. The total term of contract is five years. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Fernando? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to award the agreement for the odor mitigating management control program to Evacqua Water Technologies LLC, approve routine expenditures to exceed fifty thousand dollars annually, but not to exceed the budgetary appropriation for any fiscal year, and authorize the city staff to exercise the option to renew the agreement for four additional one-year terms.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven point fifteen, award bids for citywide bulk chemicals for Public Works and Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Fernando?
You thought the commission class is so, I know. Just one more. Well, this time I'll be talking to you about citywide bulk chemical supply. In the past, individual departments and divisions ordered their chemicals separately. However, this time it was decided to call bids for a citywide supply, hoping to get a better price. These chemicals are used at the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plants, and at the aquatic center. Calcium hypochloride is used in the water distribution system for maintaining disinfection of the city's portable water supply. I will stay away from naming the rest of the chemicals. Several chemicals are used at the swimming pool at the aquatic center. Remaining chemicals are used for various stages in water and wastewater treatment plants. Funds are allocated and available in the Water Utility Fund, Wastewater Utility Fund, and General Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of council for Mr. Fernando? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Moses?
Thank you. Motion, I move to award the citywide bid for bulk chemicals to Hill Brothers Chemical Company, Penko Inc., Polydine Inc., P V S D X Inc., and Univar Solutions, and to authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew and issue an annual requirement contract exceeding fifty thousand, but not to exceed the budgetary appropriation for any fiscal year for a maximum of four additional twelve-month terms.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, our final public hearing is item seven point one six, award professional services agreement for public defender services to Whitney and Whitney, P L L C, D B A Whitney and Whitney, Baldridge Atkinson. Judge Colley?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you folks tonight. This is to award the professional services agreement for our public defender services to Whitney and Whitney. They have been handling that for the last few years. The previous contract, which expires the end of this month, was for a set amount that hasn't changed in five years. The amount that has been agreed upon between us is within the budget for the full five years that we had budgeted for this year. So I think that we did well in negotiating that contract with them. There is about a two to three percent increase per year over the next five years, with the last year being the three hundred thousand that we had budgeted for this year. There has been, over the last year, about a twenty percent increase in filings for a traditional court caseload, about a ten percent increase in our problem-solving court caseload. We expect both of those to go up over the next five years. And so in seeing that, that's how we have arranged this contract.
Thank you. Are there questions for members of the council for Judge Colley? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Coke?
Motion?
Please.
I move to award the professional services agreement for public defender services to Whitney and Whitney, P L L C, D B A Whitney, Whitney, Baldridge Atkinson.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke with, and Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public hearings, but we do have a call to the public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu. Your comments are limited to three minutes. There is a box that will appear on the television screens with the timer if you so choose to speak. We, again, cannot have a two-way conversation during this conversation because it's not on the agenda, so we would listen intently to whatever comments or thoughts you might have, but we can't have that two-way conversation. You don't have to sign up, and we didn't have anyone sign up, but if you would like to address the city council, call to the public, please make way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Marsha Bailey. I'm here tonight to address the new members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think that when we lose faith in those we trust, we become apathetic. It affects the way we treat each other. It affects the way we treat our city. It causes people to not care to be involved because in the end, they feel that their voices don't matter. My husband and his family boated here before there was a bridge. We were married. We've boated here for forty years. We've owned a house here for ten years, our first house, ten years ago, and we've been permanent residents for seven years. So we're not new to Havasu. There's lots of others just like myself who love this city and have become part of the city and its growth for a long time. And we're not against growth and progress, or we wouldn't have moved here by choice. My concern for our current growth and progress is the lack of forward thinking and vision. There's so much development in this town that continues to be pushed through without proper infrastructure. The disregard for the lack of this infrastructure and the backtracking to write those decisions to proceed without it affects the current residents immensely. There are developments in the foothills that were built without adequate egress and no fire station, and now they want to disrupt existing neighborhoods to gain that. The island has the same egress issue, and building up there continues. Rezoning to accommodate developers has become essentially a bait and switch on the residents. They buy in the neighborhood, and then after the fact, it's rezoned for a developer with no regard for the effect that it's going to have on their property. We don't have enough working-class housing to accommodate the need for some of the most important people that are the mainstay of the city already here. Our servers, our mechanics, our teachers, our grocery clerks, and those kind of people. We don't have enough health care. We don't have enough veterinarian care. We don't have enough childcare. And so far, the traffic studies seem to either have been poorly done because of our city's seasonal changes or ignored. The city continues to allow these developers to compound these issues by building with no regard for proper infrastructure. Why are these developers not having to, on their dime before building, make improvements to our infrastructure? The developers don't care about the residents or the quality of our life. They're here to make money. So we are depending on the decisions of the elected officials to protect our city. So far, it seems that the residents' desires have fallen on deaf ears. I'm hoping that perhaps tonight, the new members of the Planning and Zoning Commission will make a difference, and we can walk away with confidence, feeling that we've truly been heard. To my fellow residents, please educate yourself who these developers are, who they're working with, who's voting yes on these items, and primaries are the third, or are in July, and there's three city council seats at stake. It's important to vote for the people who have our current residents and the best interest of our city at heart. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Would anyone else like to address the city council? Call to the public.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I really appreciate Ms. Bailey. She's amazing. Holy cow. What she just said is so much what I want to say right now. I chose once again to, perhaps unwisely, walk here from Smoke Tree Avenue, Lake Havasu, not, yeah, Smoke Tree and Lake Havasu Avenue, all the way up here. And of course, you know, when you're disabled, it takes longer than the average person. You know, Apple Maps says it should only take forty minutes to walk up here. It took me an hour and a half. And yeah, I probably didn't choose the right time, but I was kind of curious. As a person who sits at home quite often in my air conditioner house and reads people's messages and complaints, I did wonder what it would be like to walk up somewhere for a great distance in the middle of the day somewhere without the air conditioning. Anyway, I wanted to recommend, after that beautiful walk today, do you know how many places there was? I decided to take a different path, not just the street. I took the whole sidewalk and everything, straight up Smoke Tree to Swanson, from Swanson all the way up to Tacoma. Do you know how many benches there were for me to sit on, for anybody to sit on? There was like all these beautiful apartments. I actually had to go sit in the stairs of those horrible condo thingies that nobody likes on, right next to the Pima Wash, the three-story thingamabobbers. Thankfully, the stairs were right there, but like, okay, I'm disabled. And it's a hundred and whatever out. When I'm walking, trying to go someplace as a pedestrian, my goal is to get to here, to the city council meeting. And being disabled, there's, yes, there's a cooling station across the street. For me to walk across the street and come back here, to back across the street to get up here is actually not convenient and not easy. And as I was walking, I realized you have a lot of, I know it's, and you're planning zoning development codes when you're going to change things. Can I just highly recommend any new complexes that you have the developers put up a little park bench and a shade tree right next to it, like the front of their, like, right where the sidewalk, wherever the sidewalks are? Park bench, there was only one complex, that whole mile and a half that had a place where I could sit down. I had to sit on the sidewalk, and thankfully, I didn't sit at the stop sign today, so I didn't have to worry about the dog pee. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the city council? Call to the public. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Item nine, current events. Are there any council committee reports?
Mayor, I was just going to remind everybody, the Chamber of Commerce, along with the Havasu Realtors Association, will be putting on a candidate forum tomorrow night at the high school auditorium at five P M. I recommend you all get out and listen to us all tell you why we wanted you to vote for us at five P M. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not really a council committee report. It's just a P S A to all the people out there in the public. I had a situation this last week where I'm trying to help one of our local residents. He received an email saying that they had subtracted six hundred and fifty dollars from his account so to pay for his computer software that he did not order. And if he didn't want to have it, he had to call a number, which he did. Long story short, they scammed him out of seventy-seven thousand dollars. Thank you to the local police department. They are working very diligently to track these people down and to try to get him his money back. But if anybody calls you or sends you something that you did not want, and they tell you, I need access to your computer, and don't tell anybody about this. It's got to be a secret. You can't tell anybody. And that we're going to seize your accounts if you don't do this, don't listen to them. Hang up immediately, and don't lose your money. And he's not the first person that I've had to deal with. It's happening here, folks, so don't listen to the scammers on the phone. And if somebody says, don't tell anybody, tell somebody. Hang up and immediately call the police department. They have a unit that will take care of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, just a quick update from the P E D. You know, there's always not too much I can share because of N D As. You know, they're private businesses that are coming to our town, stuff like that. But something I can share is that we're really excited about, Deck X, which is foam business that they use to put on like boats, and there's actually all sorts of applications with all of our recreational vehicles. But they're expanding, and P E D was essential in helping them find a spot out the Agave Business Park and finding a new home for more industry here in our town. So great work to the P E D.
Thank you. Are there any other council committee reports? All right, our item ten, future meetings. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, July ninth, two thousand twenty-four, at five thirty P M. It's a regular meeting, and we also will do our property tax levy adoption at that meeting. And then on Tuesday, July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, at five thirty P M, we'll also have a regular meeting. Item eleven, are there any future discussion items? Item twelve, motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you for being here. Be kind. We'll see you next time.